This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act NJ SA 10:4-6 et sec, notice of which was sent to the record on the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Thank you, roll call please.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Here.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Mayor LaBrusso.
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And as you can see by the crowd, we have a pretty busy night, so we're gonna start off with some proclamations and presentations and some swearing ins, so... So our kids, we have our Hackensack track team is here. Okay, so we have for all of our track stars, we have some nice certificates, and every year we do this, we have a great junior track team in Hackensack along with other junior programs, and we like to recognize them, so we're glad you're here. We want to get you guys done first, because we know it's a school night, in case you've got homework, go home and finish your homework and make sure you get your studies done. So, Nikwan Bromwell, please come up. Nikwan Bromwell, 100 meter USA Track and Field Junior Olympics. And as you can see, he's got the hardware to prove it. Next in line is Samuel Shortridge. And actually, there's four names here, because this is a 4x100 relay team. So you've got Samuel Shortridge. We've got Colin Janty. There's only two, alright, so Colin and Samuel. Where'd Samuel go? And competing in the shot put, Sage Nicholson. Julian competes in the javelin and discus. 100 meter and 200 meter. Long jump specialist Carter Lester. Also, 4x400 Dylan Gargilla, I'm sorry, Gargilla. Sorry about the name. 4x400 Logan Natalle, and 4x400 Steven Longo. And Steven Garcia, 4x400. Dylan? Sorry about the name, Dylan. Steve Longo? Which one? Logan? Longo? Seven Garcia, 4x400. Sir? Congratulations, sir. Dustin? Nicholas Shortridge, 4x400. Dude's got his own headband. Nice. Dylan? Is he here? Any one for Dylan Decambre? He's here. Alright, we're gonna have to make his up. She's gonna make yours up and get it to you shortly, alright? Alright, these two aren't... Do you want me to read their names, the two that aren't here? Yes, absolutely, you can hold this one. Thomas Rafer Jr., who is not here, competes in the 100 meter, 200 meter, and 4x100. Alright, let's give him a round of applause, and also Tyler Anderson, in the 4x100. Thank you. So, let's give these guys a round of applause.
How's everybody doing? I had to bring my coaches up. I have Robert. Coach Tony. I have Coach Stan. Coach David. And I would like to coach Peter, my head coach.
Thank you, Coach. Thanks to all the coaches. And the city of Hackensack, thank you, all the coaches. We know it's an unpaid position, it's volunteered, you spend a lot of time, you keep our kids out of trouble, you keep them off the streets, you give them a shove in the right direction and keep them on the straight and narrow. And having coached for quite a long time, along Deputy Mayor Sims and Councilman Pataglia, also have coached in town for years, we know how important it is, and we know how fulfilling it is, but we also know how, you know, how much time it takes, so the city appreciates it, and it's the fruits of your labor. And I could tell you the best part, because I'm a little bit older than you, nothing's gonna be better than in 20 years, one of these kids come up to you and remember you to stay or free to go, we leave it up to you. and say, "Hey, Coach, how you doing?", and they give you a big hug. Yes. How many altogether? There's nothing better than that, so, and that's what it's all about. So, congratulations to you guys, congratulations to the kids.
The coaches go behind the kids, because...
Like seven, eight, nine?
I have the numbers I gave you.
And that way, we get all the kids...
Come on up here, come on up here, guys. Oh, come on.
Sure.
What was that?
I'm gonna wrestle you.
I mean, 11.
What do you mean, no?
No, it's like, we're pulled, and we're gonna have discussion along vendors, restaurants,
Just give her the yes.
Say yes.
Alright, we're good? Good work?
Great job, guys. Congratulations.
and everybody else.
Good work, guys.
So you have another unit?
Good job, guys.
We know that.
It's beautiful, we'd have a great time.
But there's incorrect information, there's no trucks allowed on the streets, parked on the streets, we don't allow that, so, a food truck cannot park. So, let's do this after this, alright? You'll be able to speak publicly. Alright, moving forward, we have some fire department promotions, we have lieutenants, captains, and some deputy chiefs we're gonna take care of tonight. We have a Class 1 fire department, as you all know, and we're very fond of them here in Hackensack, they do a wonderful job, and they keep us safe, along with our police department and our EMS, and we're very pleased and happy to have them here in Hackensack. So, Chief Freeman, you've done a great job, and these promotions are well deserved. So, Jeffrey Giaruso, please come forward.
Okay.
More blue or black?
Blue.
Okay. Come on up, guys. How are ya? Alright, who's gonna hold the Bible? You wanna hold after that? Okay. Dad's gonna put his right hand on the Bible, and raise his left hand, and repeat after me. "I, Jeffrey Giaruso, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the rank of lieutenant according to the best of my ability, so help me God." Congratulations.
Jeff, you're gonna sign some paperwork, make it official. You guys wanna take a picture up here?
Yeah.
Yep. We'll sign it first.
That way you lead.
It's just them.
Was? No. Do we spam with them?
Yeah, that's usually, yeah, it's down there.
Yeah, yeah.
Guess what, you'll stay down here.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Aaron Hilliard.
Good to see you.
Please put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I messed that up last time, I had it right last time, but not before. Repeat after me. "I, Aaron Hilliard, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the rank of lieutenant according to the best of my ability, so help me God." Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. Yes. If you're sworn in, don't leave, because we want to take a group picture at the end.
Alright. Jose Potacio. Please come forward.
Jose's not here.
Oh, Jose's not here, okay. Timothy Rice, please come forward. It's nice to see you somewheres besides a false alarm at the hospital. Who's gonna hold the Bible? You or him, lady? Okay. Mr. Rice, please put your left hand on the Bible, and raise your right hand, and repeat after me. "I, Timothy Rice, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the rank of lieutenant according to the best of my ability, so help me God." Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. If you're sworn in, don't leave, because we want to take a group picture at the end.
Alright. Jose Potacio. Please come forward.
Jose's not here.
Oh, Jose's not here, okay. Timothy Rice, please come forward. It's nice to see you somewheres besides a false alarm at the hospital. Who's gonna hold the Bible? You or him, lady? Okay. Mr. Rice, please put your left hand on the Bible, and raise your right hand, and repeat after me. "I, Timothy Rice, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the rank of lieutenant according to the best of my ability, so help me God." Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. If you're sworn in, don't leave, because we want to take a group picture at the end.
Alright. Jose Potacio. Please come forward.
Jose's not here.
Oh, Jose's not here, okay. Timothy Rice, please come forward. It's nice to see you somewheres besides a false alarm at the hospital. Who's gonna hold the Bible? You or him, lady? Okay. Mr. Rice, please put your left hand on the Bible, and raise your right hand, and repeat after me. "I, Timothy Rice, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the rank of lieutenant according to the best of my ability, so help me God." Congratulations.
Did he sign?
Thank you. You on the clock?
No. I have to work this hour, so I'm happy. If I need a new camera, soon.
Ted, I need a new camera.
Alright, you. Peter Greco, please. Repeat after me. "I, Peter Greco, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the rank of captain according to the best of my ability, so help me God." Congratulations. Spiro Lekas. Congratulations, sir. Can he hold it, Mom? Okay. There, Mom. Are we ready? "I, Spiro Lekas, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the rank of captain according to the best of my ability, so help me God." Congratulations. Spiro Lekas. Congratulations, sir. 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 Spiro Lekas.
Repeat after me. I, Peter Greco,
I, Peter Greco,
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution
of the United States
Of the United States
and the Constitution
And the Constitution
of the state of New Jersey
Of the state of New Jersey
that it will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the same
To the same
and to the governments
And to the governments
established in the United States
Established in the United States
and in this state
And in this state
under the authority
Under the authority
of the people
Of the people
and that I will faithfully
And I will faithfully
impartially
And justly perform
And justly perform all the duties
All the duties
of the rank of captain
The rank of captain
according to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability
so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Spiro Lekas. Congratulations, sir. Can you hold it up? Okay. There, mom. We ready? I, Spiro Lekas
I, Spiro Lekas
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution
of the United States
Of the United States
and the Constitution
And the Constitution
of the state of New Jersey
State of New Jersey
that it will bear true faith
That I will bear true faith
and allegiance
And allegiance
to the same
To the same
and to the governments established
And to the governments established
in the United States
In the United States
and in this state
And in this state
under the authority
Under the authority
of the people
Of the people
and that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
impartially
Impartially
and justly perform
And justly perform
all the duties
All the duties
of the rank of captain
Of the rank of captain
according to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability
congratulations. So help me God. Congratulations. Don't go away, Spiro.
There's no attorney review.
Anthony Real. Left hand on the Bible, right hand up, please. Repeat after me. I, Anthony Real
I, Anthony Real
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution
of the United States
Of the United States
and the Constitution
And the Constitution
of the state of New Jersey
Of the state of New Jersey
that it will bear true faith
That it will bear true faith
and allegiance
And allegiance
to the same
To the same
and to the governments established
And to the governments established
in the United States
In the United States
and in this state
And in this state
under the authority
Under the authority
of the people
Of the people
and that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
impartially
Impartially
and justly perform
And justly perform
all the duties
All the duties
of the rank of captain
Of the rank of captain
according to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability
so help me God.
So help me God.
congratulations. Michael Christiansen. Left hand on the Bible, right hand up, please. Repeat after me. I, Michael Christiansen
I, Michael Christiansen
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution
of the United States
Of the United States
and the Constitution
And the Constitution
of the state of New Jersey
Of the state of New Jersey
that it will bear true faith
That I will bear true faith
and allegiance
And allegiance
to the same
To the same
and to the governments
And to the governments
established in the United States
Established in the United States
and in this state
And in this state
under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people
and that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
impartially
Impartially
and justly perform
And justly perform
all the duties
All the duties
of the rank of deputy chief
Of the rank of deputy chief
according to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability
so help me God.
So help me God.
congratulations. John Gorgagliano, please. How are you, sir?
Good.
Just the two of yous? Oh, there's more coming. Okay. Okay, great. Hi, guys. How are you? Left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I, John Gorgagliano
I, John Gorgagliano
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution
of the United States
Of the United States
and the Constitution
And the Constitution
of the state of New Jersey
Of the state of New Jersey
that it will bear true faith
That it will bear true faith
and allegiance
And allegiance
to the same
To the same
and to the governments
And to the governments
established in the United States
Established in the United States
and in this state
And in this state
under the authority
Under the authority
of the people
Of the people
and that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
impartially
Impartially
and justly perform
And justly perform
all the duties
All the duties
of the rank of deputy chief
Of the rank of deputy chief
according to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability
so help me God.
So help me God.
congratulations, sir.
All the officers who were just sworn in, please stand in front of the dais and we'll get a picture of you, guys. You guys should line up in the front. We'll just stand behind you. All right? Here's John. Your side, not his side. All right, guys. Very good. Chief, you want to say something?
Yes, Cezanne?
Yep.
Deb, Chief Freeman, 205 State Street. You can start the clock.
Okay. Well, hurry up. You're using your minutes.
Now, first of all, to all the family members that came out tonight, I thank you for the support that you show these guys on a daily basis. And I thank you for coming here tonight to support them in this promotional ceremony. It means a lot to have a nice crowd out here. To the newly promoted guys, just so everybody's aware, these promotions are a result of retirements over the past maybe year, year and a half. So some of these officers have been in their rank for a little while now. We usually like to wait till we have a group with them because, you know, firemen like to do things in big groups.
Yep.
But really, the guys that got promoted tonight, congratulations. Well deserved. Like I said, I've obviously have known all of you for your entire careers. Unfortunately, I have to say that. I have them 36 years here. But every one of them here tonight deserved this promotion. They all worked hard at it. I know what it takes to get promoted. It's a competitive process. It takes a commitment. Takes time away from your family. It may take time away from your part-time job. And but all of that effort is paid off, you know, when this night happens. And I congratulate you all for that effort that you put in in getting the result that you got here. And I look forward to working with you guys for the next few years, at least. And for your immediate family members, spouses, children, thank you for the patience you showed them. Here again, I know it's time away from you and maybe extra burden on you. But the benefit to the city of Hackensack and to their careers is tenfold from that sacrifice. So I thank you all for that also. City manager, mayor, and council, as always, I'm up here. But it's the truth. I thank you for your continued support of me and my department here. It's been, you know, 11 years I've been the chief of this department. And I can honestly say that you've treated me with the utmost respect, our department with the utmost respect. You've given us the things we need, the tools we need. And I thank you for that continued support. And I look forward to working with you in the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations to everyone tonight. I can honestly say, you know, I always see you guys out around town. You have a big presence. I have three children in the school system. Big presence in the school. Big presence at different community events. And it means a lot to the community. It means a lot to the kids to see you guys out there. And I think that should be noted. It's just not the everyday work that you're doing when you're at the firehouse and on call. But those extra things you do for the citizens of Hackensack, and, you know, it's recognized. And we appreciate it very much. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Again, congratulations. I know a lot of hard work and a lot of years of effort and a lot of missing family occasions went into this night here tonight. And don't let it go without knowing how appreciated all of you are and how much we appreciate all those sacrifices you make for the fine city. And we all know, we have the best fire department in the whole state.
I'm honored to sit here. We have the best fire department in the state of New Jersey. And congratulations. To the utmost respect. And I salute everyone who got honored here tonight. Thank you.
Congratulations to you guys for your promotions. Enjoy your promotions. And thank you for the job that you guys do for the city. And I am very proud of the fire department. Thank you.
Congratulations to our new officers. You've done a great job. I see a lot of you guys at work because of my position there. And fortunately, it's usually because of a false alarm and not a real fire. But it's always good to see you guys. And I see how hard you work. And you pay attention to detail from the top to the bottom. You guys are number one for a reason. So we appreciate that. And we appreciate your efforts. And congratulations again. And I would be remiss in not talking about what tomorrow means to all of us. Tomorrow, we are having a dedication in front of the firehouse of a new monument with materials from the World Trade Center. It'll take place at 3:30. Everybody's welcome to come. I ask that you please come because it'd be nice to have a great crowd there. Something we should never forget. Something I'll never forget. I remember every minute of what it was doing when it happened. And as most of you, especially you guys that were serving at that time, I'm sure you remember every minute of it. And I don't know if any of you were over there. I'm sure some of you might have been. I know a lot of our guys did go over there and help. And fire departments from all over the region sent people over after that attack. But tomorrow's a day that we should never forget. And, you know, we should honor those who lost their lives and honor those who continue to fight the battle from what happened there. So if you can make it tomorrow, we'd appreciate that. And with that, we wish you guys a great night. Go celebrate a little bit with your friends and family and have a great night and a great rest of your careers. Thank you. Take a two-minute recess so you guys can clear out. You don't have to hang out, that's for sure. Moving forward, I need a motion for the approval of the minutes of the Cal and regular minutes of August 20, 2019. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. With that, we go right to the... Oh, August? Okay. Got to do a roll call because Leo was not here.
Councilmember von Rudenberg? For the minutes.
Oh, aye, yes, sorry.
Deputy Mayor, Kenesvino? Aye. Deputy Mayor Sims? Councilmember Pataglia? Mayor LeBros?
Aye. That will go right to the city manager's report.
Good evening, mayor and council, invited guests. This is the city manager's report for September 10, 2019. Previously stated by our mayor, the Hackensack Fire Department will dedicate a World Trade Center Steel Artifact Monument tomorrow, September 11, at 3:30 PM at 205 State Street in front of Fire Headquarters. All are welcome. Building Department, update. 125 notices written, 185 inspections made, eight summonses issued, 14 COs done, 19 open requests fulfilled. The Eminem Building Recreational Center will be hosting a grand opening event on September 14 at 10:30... I'm sorry. Strike that. From 10 AM till 3 PM. Details of the event are scheduled and are posted on the city of Hackensack's website. In reference to our food truck ordinance, currently, the city ordinance does not allow food trucks, mobile vendors, to operate unless all food is prepackaged. A revised ordinance has been introduced to allow food trucks with open food on a limited basis. That ordinance was pulled tonight. There will be no discussion. A special meeting will be set by the city manager to meet with all parties involved to discuss the options and the needs of this ordinance. The food truck ordinance was provided to allow food trucks. I think the omission is, and I'll just be brief on this real quick, is that the city of Hackensack, under the current statute, the right for the city has no ordinance to permit any food truck in the city. Current ordinance, I won't read it, but it does. This was the intent to allow food trucks to be utilized in the city of Hackensack. Apparently, somebody thinks that this is a way to prevent or allow this type of condition. So mayor and council has reviewed what was proposed. We have pulled it. We want to make sure that we're inclusive, that we consider all parties involved. One of them would be considered, obviously, a brewery. So there'll be an establishment of a meeting. We'll reach out to concern people to have this meeting and take their input. But there'll be no ordinance tonight or approval. It's been pulled. Let's see.
I'm sorry, you can't speak from the audience. There's a public comment session as soon as we're done, and you can speak at the public comment. But he stated quite clearly, parties involved would be, in my opinion, would be breweries, other restaurants, for instance, who might be affected by it, civic groups, stuff like that, stuff that a food truck would impact.
And last on my list is, the new turf field is ready. There was a ribbon-cutting ceremony today at 3:30. We invite all to go down and see the beautiful field that has been reestablished. And the city has put forth the effort to provide a safe environment for our children and the residents to use this field. The ribbon-cutting was held at 3:30, the new turf field in Johnson Park. This would complete the city manager's report.
Okay. With that, let's move forward with business. We have quite a bit on the docket here. Resolution 377-19.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 37-2019, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, Vehicles and Traffic, to add a new handicap parking space in Section 49.2, Parking for the Handicapped. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on the ordinance 377... Resolution 377-19, please come forward. Seeing no one, motion to close to the public. It's about handicap parking, sir.
Oh, okay.
All right?
Need a motion to close?
Need a motion to close to the public?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed?
And then a motion now to...
Need a motion to adopt the ordinance, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is adopted.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 37-219 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 378-19.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 38-2019, a bond ordinance providing for improvements to the city's stormwater infrastructure by and in the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen, State of New Jersey, appropriating $1,550,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,550,000 bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public who'd like to speak about Resolution 378-19, which is a stormwater infrastructure ordinance, please come forward. Seeing none, motion to close.
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adopt the ordinance, please.
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 38-2019 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 379-19.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 39-2019, bond ordinance providing for the city's combined sewer separation project by and in the city of Hackensack in the county of Bergen, State of New Jersey, appropriating $14,630,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $14,630,000 bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on ordinance 39-219, please come forward. Sir?
Richard Solik in Hackensack, New Jersey. I'm not against the ordinance, but I think it's appropriate time to put some of this borrowing into perspective. It began the year, according to your supplementary debt statement... I don't know if you guys actually look at those things. You should. At $72.6 million. It was a $6.6 billion bond during the year. Tonight, you're adding $16 million, I believe. Anyway, your total debt after tonight is $95.4 million. That's more than the revenues raised by taxation in a single year. It's not free money. And please don't tell me about the tax refunding ordinance of bonds that Mr. LeBros on the prior council left you. This is really getting a little bit scary. It's going to be paid back long after you folks are here or I'm here. You're leaving. This is going to be your legacy. I'm aware of the cap figures on borrowing. It's 3.5% of your assessed, total assessed value. Back in the day, and, you know, I know you think Mr. Mangin is the best CFO in the state. I kind of thought Mr. Lakava had a better handle on municipal finances. He said the city never went over 1%. That's what they're comfortable. You're now at about 1.7. You're about halfway to the max. It's not free money. You've just got to... Maybe this is why, along the way, maybe the Sim Square Garden should not have been as grandiose. Maybe the Leo Dome should have been scaled back a little bit. It's not free money. You've got to pay attention to what you're doing. This is a lot of debt. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public on this ordinance? Seeing none, motion to close.
I want to speak.
On this ordinance?
Yes, sir. No?
Sure.
I'm raising a question and asking if it's not free money, and if all things have been taken into consideration with the accounting of all matters, is it something that will be completed and started and finished? That's the only thing I think that has to be addressed, and if so, then they have to answer that finalized.
Absolutely, and I'll be glad to answer that. The money for this is for, we, Hackensack is one of three municipalities in the county, one of about 20 in the state of New Jersey that has a combined sewer system. That means the stormwater and our sewage mixes together. It's mandated by the Department of Environmental Protection that that is remediated, and right now, we're about, we have about 70 events a year where raw sewage is pumped into the Hackensack River, and we have to get it down to four per year. The only way to do that is to take care of the combined sewer system and separate them. We've been doing this for quite a while. We know it's not cheap, but it's something mandated and has to be done. Please, please, in the audience, thank you. We're well aware of our debt and are very talented. I would say Mr. Mangen is here to defend that if he feels he needs to come up. So, anybody else on this ordinance? Seeing none, motion to close.
No, do you?
Sure.
Yeah, just one quick comment, yeah, because the comment on the debt is spot on. These numbers are big. And as I indicated during the Cow meeting, we'll be doing several of these ordinances. But you have to understand that debt itself is not the villain. What you really want to keep an eye on is your debt service budget, okay? And we made a commitment that we're going to continue to improve the city's infrastructure and do it within our existing debt service budget, which means we're not raising taxes for any of these capital improvements, not a $14 million sewer separation, not Johnson Park, not the M&amp;M Building. We're doing it all within the existing debt service budget. There are no new taxes for this. And even the bond ordinances that we're anticipating that are going to be coming down the line for the Main Street sewer separation, you know, when we get into the Green Street area, these are all planned to be done under the existing debt service budget. The debt will grow, no doubt about it. The debt will grow, but the debt service budget, our paying back of the debt, that won't grow. That's going to stay exactly where it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Motion to close to the public, please?
Unless you want us to speak?
You can, you can come up and speak, sir.
I'm Joseph Campagna, 33 Essex Street, Hackensack, New Jersey. My concern is that stores that are going out of business are losing the lucrative growth that is only, hasn't even begun yet, you know? There are people who have restaurants who...
Mr. Campagna, this is only about sewer...
Yeah, what I'm saying...
It's only about the city combined sewer ordinance.
But I'm talking about the taxes. It's not necessary to raise the taxes on Main Street to pay for these things.
This has nothing to do with the taxes on Main Street, sir. This has to do just with a bond ordinance...
Yes, but it...
For the combined sewer separation.
Our taxes on Main Street will make a difference, and they shouldn't, they shouldn't be.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public? Motion to close to the public?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer. Second. I'm sorry, who seconded?
Second.
Okay. No, well, they both did kind of pick one.
They both did same time. Just pick one.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 39-2019 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 380-19.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 40-2019, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, Vehicles and Traffic, to adjust the location of a handicap parking space on Park Street in Section 49.2, Parking for the Handicapped. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion to open to the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody who'd like to speak to ordinance 40-2019, an ordinance amending to the Code of the City of Hackensack for Vehicles and Traffic, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close to the public?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to adopt the ordinance, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 40-2019 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 381-19.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 41-2019, an ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, Vehicles and Traffic, to prohibit overnight parking at the Hackensack Recreation Center, commonly known as the M&amp;M Building. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak to this ordinance, please come forward. Seeing no one, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adopt the ordinance, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 41-2019 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. As was mentioned, Resolution 382-19 has been pulled. That will be discussed among certain parties, including the food truck people, some restaurant establishments who have some concerns. Obviously, the breweries will all be involved in that discussion, and that will take place. The city managers...
Be determined, I don't have a date.
Yeah, city managers tasked with putting that together, and will, sooner, sooner the better. So, Resolution 383-19.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 43-2019, an ordinance updating various sections of the Code of the City of Hackensack with respect to the financial management of the city. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed.
Here we oppose, what's going on?
Excuse me, sir. We're going through a formal meeting. This is the way it works, all right? Anybody have any questions on Resolution 383-19? Who wants to come up and speak to this resolution only?
First of all, I don't think it's, the time is right to have food trucks at all. I think...
Sir, this is not about food trucks. This is Resolution 383-19. The food truck resolution has been scrapped, all right?
Well, why can't anyone who is interested in...
At the public session, at the end of this meeting, we'll have public comment, and everybody gets to speak. But we have to, we have to get through our work. This is, we have to do this every two weeks. We go through every resolution and ordinance. Adoption of ordinance 43-2019, a motion to the public. Nobody from the public, a motion to close to the public?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. Motion to adopt the ordinance, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 43-2019 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 384-19.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 44-2019, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, Vehicles and Traffic, to add two new handicap parking spaces in Section 49.2, Parking for the Handicapped.
Any motion, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 44-2019 is introduced is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on September 24th, 2019, at 8 o'clock PM or soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 385-19.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 45-2019, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, Vehicles and Traffic, to formally establish a handicap parking space in Section 49.2, Parking for the Handicapped on Holt Street.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 45-2019 is introduced is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on September 24th, 2019, at 8 o'clock PM or soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 387-19. 386, sorry, my bad.
That's okay. Resolution authorizing tax refunds for duplicate payments and county board judgments.
Need a motion, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. Resolution 387-19.
This is a resolution authorizing the settlement of litigation entitled Martin versus Hackensack et al., pending in the United States District Court, District of New Jersey, bearing docket number 2:18CV07819, CCCMF.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. Resolution 388-19.
This is a resolution awarding contracts for engineering services to suburban consulting engineers for Main Street combined sewer separation design.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. Resolution 389-19.
This is a resolution authorizing accrued time payout of $79,434.88 to firefighter Mark Tomaselli.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 390-19.
This is a resolution awarding change orders number 2A through 4 to New Prince Concrete for parking lot improvements at the M&amp;M Recreation Center.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. Resolution 391-19.
This is a resolution authorizing an ambulance reimbursement.
Have a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Resolution 392-19.
This is a resolution authorizing change order number 1 to Brightview Engineering for Main Street State Street Two Way Conversion Project.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. Resolution 393-19.
This is a resolution authorizing payment of bills.
Need a motion to pay the bills?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before we move forward with the consent agenda, does anybody have any conflicts?
Raffle for you, Ray.
Yes, I think so. Where is that? We have to pull Resolution 399-19 out of the consent agenda. Read it separately, please?
The raffle.
Raffles.
The raffle.
Where my place and employment.
Anything else?
Anybody else have any other conflicts?
No.
That is it?
Bless you.
The following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditures are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any items requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and consent agenda items will be reflected in the call in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. The consent agenda consists of Resolutions 394-19 through 406-19, with the exception of 399-19, which will be voted separately. 394-19 is a resolution correcting incorrect block and lot numbers in Resolution 310-19, authorizing tax collector to convert charges to property liens as per NJSA 40:48-2.14. Resolution 395-19 is a resolution authorizing the tax collector to convert charges to property liens as per NJSA 40:48-2.14. Resolution 396-19 is a resolution authorizing the tax collector to cancel $103.38 for sewer charges at 20 Mercer Street. Resolution 397-19 is a resolution authorizing the tax collector to cancel taxes for 100% exempt veteran. Resolution 398-19 is a resolution authorizing recreation refunds for park security deposits. Resolution 399-19 will be voted separately. Resolution 400-19 is a resolution authorizing renewal of inactive liquor license Keku LLC license number 0223-44-066-006 for the 2019-2020 term. Resolution 401-19 is a resolution authorizing leave of absence without pay for MacArthur Lee Jr., DPW Maintenance Worker 1, grounds for 12, for 12 weeks. Resolution 402-19 is a resolution authorizing the entry of an interlocal agreement with River Edge with respect to a sewer connection for Ragovia Restaurant. Resolution 403-19 is a resolution authorizing the release of escrow funds in the amount of $609.13 for 405 Main Street. Resolution 404-19 is a resolution authorizing the release of escrow funds in the amount of $256.50 for 360 West Pleasant View Avenue. Resolution 405-19 is a resolution authorizing the release of performance bond in the amount of $62,763.12 for 202 Essex Street, which is the 7-Eleven. And Resolution 406-19 is a resolution authorizing the City of Hackensack to submit an Opportunity Zone Challenge Grant application to the New Jersey Economic Develop Authority through the Opportunity Zone Challenge Grant Program. We need a motion.
Need a motion, please, to read the consent, to accept the consent agenda as it was read?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. Now, Resolution 399, please?
Resolution 399-19 is a resolution authorizing raffle licenses for Holy Trinity Church, Fairleigh Dickinson University, and Hackensack University Medical Center Foundation.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. With that, in motion to open to the public, please, for public comment. Motion?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public who'd like to speak, please come forward, give your name to the clerk. You will have three minutes. Thank you.
Yes, hi, Mayor and Council. As I was saying, I do want to speak about the food truck. The food truck shouldn't be operating yet. This is not the time. The people who are struggling along, no matter how bad some people may think those businesses look on the outside or the inside, okay? This is an opportunity for them to make some money back on their investment. There's these buildings that are being built, construction workers there, galore, and there are going to be more. My father operated his food truck. When ShopRite came in and took away his business, we could have had ShopRite. We didn't take ShopRite because we didn't want to get involved with the mob from Brooklyn. That's a fact. I can prove it, okay? Okay, so, my father was forced to have a food truck. He took his food truck on the, to build, help build the MidRises on Prospect and New Milford. He put two people out of business in New Milford because they were building all the housing development. He didn't mean to do that. One of them, I actually ended, dating his daughter in 1970s, okay? He had to relocate his business. He almost went under. I mean, food trucks do impact businesses, even on takeouts. I had a discussion with people at Fairmount Eats. They can make, they can, they can expand with that. If anybody's gonna get a food truck, it should be a food truck for outside of Hacken... We need, we need more restaurants here. There are plenty of open spaces. There's no need to put more businesses out on their, on their butt. Elementary and Hackensack Brewery should get a food truck, and only there should they be able to park on the street. But to even park a food truck at the Green or at the new little places you're carving out here or there or any parking space, you know, that is gonna impact business because people walk to these places. What if a food truck goes to Hackensack University Medical Center? That's not good because Hackensack University Medical Center sends out to a lot of Hackensack businesses. These people are sending flyers to trying to get them any way they can to H U M C, to other areas, to get themselves known. A lot of these people are immigrants. They're here legally. They have employees. They have families. Food trucks, they don't pay taxes. Taxes pay rents. We don't need more empty places. And I'm not gonna speak on this. I think I'd like to be allowed. It's not, it impacts everyone because when you impact somebody's life, you know, it impacts other people. It's a, it's a big world here. I'm gonna let everybody else speak, but that, really, you gotta reconsider.
Sir, would you do me a favor and put your name and address in contact with the clerk so when we have this meeting, I can reach out to you, make sure you're in attendance?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Richard Salt in Hackensack, New Jersey. I might go into the weeds on this, but with respect to the bonding issue, you've increased bonding tonight, thirty-two percent, thirty-two percent. And last year, no, excuse me, this year's budget, eleven cents out of every Hackensack taxpayer dollar goes to debt service. Now, you're adding that much debt, and you think that's not gonna increase that, you can keep your budget level, but you'll cut services somewhere else. That's what's gonna happen. That's numbers. That's reality. Too good to be true than it is. Now, Mr. LaBras, you know I was coming back for this. Did you have an opportunity to do your research about your wrong erroneous comments about Daniel Corolla?
I discussed it with Deputy Mayor Canestrino. We had a discussion on about what took place that night and video.
Did you look at the video?
I did not look at the video. Mrs. Canestrino...
Did you look at the minutes?
Not even look at the minutes, Rick.
Not in there, John, not in the counter.
Go ahead, go ahead. Finish your three minutes, Rick, and then I'll speak.
Go ahead. Because the easiest thing for you to do, John, would just be to say, I said it in error, I retract it. Then it's over. Because if you start saying it took place, because what you said to the N double A C P president was Corolla stood there right where you are and said this, that means it was at a meeting. And it wasn't at a meeting, John. It's not on the video. It's not in the minutes. You're wrong. Back off it. Do the right thing for once, please. I'll keep coming back.
All right.
On this one.
I'll speak to her when my time comes.
So you're not asking to back me up on something that never...
No, Mrs. Canestrino did not back me up. She just watched it because I was at work.
Regina De Pasqua, Parker Avenue. You know, during the cow, which most people didn't see, but I hope they watched the video, you're trusting Mr. Mangan, but then at the cow, you said how you didn't know what, what he was doing, and it wasn't the way you wanted it to be. So you're trusting him to increase the debt and trusting him that it's all gonna be great because he has a crystal ball and he knows this will all work out? It's on video of the exchange you had with him about what was going on, and you weren't happy with him, and we're not happy with him either. As far as the food trucks, I think you should take away his credit card for all these charging here, but the reason a lot of people question the motives, because there's been a friends and family plan going on here. And when this came up and people are saying, who's going to benefit? Who's going to benefit from this, doing this? Honestly, the restaurants are not gonna benefit because, as I said, it's a different clientele. The restaurants are more hurt by the Friday food trucks because they're right there. The food trucks that are up by the breweries are not even close. It's not, there's no competition there. So that's why people questioned who's going to benefit because there have been instances where individuals have benefited from decisions that were made, and we could not see any logical reason for doing this. Now, you're saying that, okay, we're gonna have to have the health inspector, the fire, whatever. You have a part-time person. I mean, these permits are done in advance. It's not like it's, you have to call somebody in. It is a benefit to the business, to the residents, to the image of the city. Hackensack got slammed on an elementary's Facebook post. I don't know if you saw it. Hackensack got slammed. Our image matters. We're not gay friendly. We're not brewery friendly. We're not food truck friendly. This is the image you guys are putting out, and I don't think you wanna go there. And you also said it, Mrs. Canestrino, about Main Street. It's a war zone. We drove down there on a Sunday. The roads bumpy. It needs, it needs a lot of work. It needs a lot of work. And that didn't get put as a priority as you had planned it to be. And, you know, we get these plans, and you got somebody off doing their own thing, and you don't even know it. You know, we need to tighten the belt and tighten things up here because it's just, you know, it's everywhere. And that food truck thing was, yes, we need a rule for it, but we need a sensible rule.
Anyone else from the public? Mr. Servo? How are you, Mr. Servo?
I can't leave without saying something. Look, it's all about spending, I guess, and government spending. Why can't you just tighten your, your belts? It's not your money. You have no money, okay? Oh, by the way, I'm Rich Servo on Spring Valley Avenue in Hackensack. But you, you have no money at all. None of your money is yours. It's all ours. All the taxpayers pay you to spend, and you can do what you want. So remember, you don't have a dollar. You have nothing. So please tighten your belts when it comes to managing money. And this whole, what about this flyer sent out, which is a very expensive newsletter? Do you pay for that, John, or do we pay for that?
That's a city newsletter. That's not a, that's not a political flyer. That's a city newsletter.
No, the city newsletter is all favorable to you and what you're doing, all your projects, this and that. And we're with you. We, we're, we live in the city.
That's what its intent is to do, is let everybody in the city know what's going on.
Okay, but that's, there's a quote, that's an old quote from, from government that says, "Look, government is bribing us with our own money. So please don't bribe us with our own money. Don't send out some pretty newsletter that's all favorable about your projects." One of, every one of you had a project on there. Stephanie's project, Kathy's, I think you're, you spoke in that flyer, Leo and David. Beautiful. We're with you. We live in the city. And yeah, hey, looks good. It sounds good. But if we're paying for that flyer, you're bribing us with our own money. So please re, rethink these things because you don't have any money. You're not using your money. You're using our money and everybody in the city. So, okay? And by the way, with this, with this food truck thing, I'm not sure I get it all, but the city of Hackensack was always against everything. Vendors, even at one time, shows downtown when the Fox was still here, they're against anything. And I think it has to do with the police department years ago. They were against everything. Oh, the vendors, the shows, everything. At least we have a theater now where it's legitimate to have a show there, and they have nothing to say. But the, the police department was against having anything going on in this city because, oh, well, I guess it's more work, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Servo. Anyone else in the public like to speak?
Hello. I'm not a very political person. I...
No politics.
Never really...
Talk as if you know it.
Get involved, but...
Other problem.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Lucia Santo Pietro, and I, we have a family business on Main Street. So this is in regards to the food truck situation that's going on. You know, my, my parents are immigrants from Italy, and they came here and they opened this business in nineteen seventy-seven. I'm a second generation owner at this point, and I'm all for growth for the city. I'm all for accepting new things and changing and everything else. But from our point of view as business owners, and there's a lot of, of people that do the same thing as I do, and we have food businesses, along with the growth, there's also been an increase in, in difficulty to perform our jobs. It's become more difficult in regards to traffic. It's become more difficult in regards to competition. It's become more difficult in, in, in a lot of different ways. So in regards to this, this food truck situation, you know, it's, I feel like it's a personal attack. It's personal to me because this business is, is the only thing that has helped my family succeed here in America. My father passed away five years after we opened this business, and my mother was alone with two children, one of them being myself, and she created a very successful place. And to see now that being threatened is personal to me. And it's a little irritating because we have had the blessing of being able to buy our building that we conduct our business in, and we pay our taxes. We try to do the best business we can. We put a lot of effort into our business. And, you know, we've, we've branched out and we have my cousin who, who does delivery for us. And what that kid goes through to deliver food in the city of Hackensack within five blocks is so difficult. And, you know, you can't park anywhere. The police come right away and attack you. You know, they, they, they give you tickets. The, the parking meters have changed. The prices have gone up. I understand that. I'm not somebody from, you know, a different generation. I'm, I'm a young person. I'm down with everything that's trendy now. So I'm not opposing anything like this. But it's just like, you know, we pay taxes. I don't have the, the liberty of taking my business and parking it right in front of the courthouse without worrying about a ticket.
Right.
And somebody giving me a picnic table. You know what I mean? We have to work to get there. We have to work to deliver that stuff. So I just, I, that's, that's my only point, my point of view.
What I, what I'd like to do, it's Mrs. Santa Pietro, correct?
Yes.
Lucia.
Yes.
I've been in your place. You have great food, by the way.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
And I'll give them the name of your San Maria shortly after we close, but I'd like to see her on this committee, please.
Yes.
Okay. All right. You'll hear from me.
Just consider, you know, we, we don't make six digits a year. We don't have...
Understood.
Four or five trucks that we can just, you know what I mean? It's difficult. We're in the rat race, and I don't know. Maybe I'm speaking for everybody who's, who's just like me.
Understood. I know there was some... The intent is in, I don't want to get into a back and forth. The intent when we did this, because we had, the city itself had some food truck events along with the Main Street lines down by the Green for four, three or four hours on Fridays for like five, five weekends or something like that. And as the city grows, you know, and we hope to see your business prosper even more. I'll be the first one to agree with you, but right now it's, it's a pain. It, it's the pain to get to the gain or, you know, no pain, no gain type of thing. Right now, it is, it's brutal. I'll be, as the mayor, I'll tell you, it's, it's hard navigating Hackensack. You have to, and for some reason, I kinda laugh because Maywood's still, I mean, Hackensack is still, Hackensack, Main Street is still one way. And people still want to use that as the way to get from point A to B when they should be taking River Road or State Street or Essex or something else. But they just insist on going down Main Street, which is, you got double parking going on, and it's always, it's always a hassle. You know, the light at the end of the tunnel is when this is all done. It's gonna be well worth it because businesses will be thriving. Everybody will be doing better. But the, the food truck thing is, we created, there was no ordinance at all. The only ordinance we had for any type of food truck was like your lunch wagon for construction guys that pulls up with the coffee and the, you know, the donuts in a plastic wrapper that's already been prepared and inspected, and that, we had that. But nothing to address a guy coming up making empanadas or meatball heroes or whatever. Didn't have that. So we knew we had, had to have it because you're gonna have a food truck event here or there, whether it's a church, you have, Holy Trinity has their feast. We had no, really had no ordinance to govern that, and we needed something. So we created this, not even thinking of the breweries, who are a total separate entity and are way out of the picture of Main Street and everything else. I agree with that.
But you're great. They're great for the city.
They're, they're wonderful.
I mean, everybody loves...
Our, our intent is to not hurt the breweries, but the breweries also had their own restrictions through the state where they can't have food trucks on their premises. So the food trucks have to be a little off the beaten path from now. But, you know, and they found some ways around that, which is, we're gonna sit and work with that. But we want to hear from everybody on this. That's why you're gonna be called. Other people are gonna be called. Obviously, the brewery people will be there and come to a solution that we think is fair to everybody and really hash this out. And did we, we did the ordinance in good faith trying to, because we needed to do something. Our Board of Health needed to get that under control because these vehicles have to be in, you, you run a restaurant, you know what the Board of Health is like. You know what the Fire Department's like. You have Fire Department inspections. They have to be inspected by the Board of Health as well and the Fire Department. So we needed to get control of that so that we could deal with that. But that said, we pulled this ordinance as soon as we got a lot of feedback from something that happened last night, and, you know, we'll, we'll come to a, hopefully, an amicable decision shortly. All right? So thank you. Good job. Anyone else in the public? Vinnie?
All right. Just like she was just saying just now. My name is Orlando, right? Orlando Williams. Independent for Fourteenth Parish Caribbean Kitchen, okay? Don't know much about what you guys were just talking about. All I heard was a bunch of ordinance. As far as trucks coming around and everything, it's okay. But one suggestion, because there's nothing gonna stop it. It's gonna be done. It's being done, all right? Why don't you give the trucks to the business that's already existing?
There's nothing stopping an existing business from having a...
Right. Just don't allow everybody to get trucks because if there's a whole bunch of trucks just pulling up, that's gonna hurt even more.
I don't think it's that simple, Mr. Williams.
I don't think anything is simple because just me coming up here is not simple.
I'm talking about legality. I don't think unless you ban trucks completely, you can't just say, I don't think you could just say you have to live in Hackensack to have a food truck in Hackensack.
Make it a business thing.
In Hackensack. I don't think that's legal. I would defer to counsel on that, but I've never heard of such a thing. Is that possible to do?
Well, we can't, sorry, I said something. I mean, we can't discriminate in, in that particular manner. I mean, you can license, you know, food trucks for the particular town and say you can't come into town if you don't have a specific, you know, food truck license, but you can't simply put a restriction to say, you know, you have to be a Hoboken resident or, or anything like that in, in terms of, of, you know, distinguishing because of where you reside. So I think that would be a concern. I mean, you know, places do have food trucks that they license, you know, that, that are, that are licensed more generally. Our ordinance, as we've drafted it right now, doesn't really restrict where the food truck comes from. The food truck could come from Jersey City. You still have to come...
Just looking in front of my restaurant and be like, oh, I'm selling this today.
We're never gonna allow a food truck to pull in front of somebody's place of business. That's never gonna happen.
Yeah, and that's, that, the ordinance doesn't provide...
That's why it should be the business that's existing in Hackensack.
Well, no, because you have, you have certain, you have certain events that, that call for food trucks. You have, you could have like a street fair.
Right.
For instance. So you want to have food trucks...
It should be the business that's in Hackensack that's allowed to have a food truck that goes to the event.
It's not gonna work like that, Mr. Williams, because they don't, they have food trucks that you don't have any food.
I'm just suggesting something because it's gonna happen regardless of what.
Yeah, well, you, you can't restrict it just to people who have businesses here.
I think it should be because the business is the business that pay the taxes.
There's a lot of things I think should be, but the law tells me different, so...
Okay.
You know, we have to abide by the law. I don't think we can restrict, you know, somebody's place of business that they'd have to have a food truck and nobody else could. I don't think that's even possible.
Yeah, I, I mean, obviously, I haven't particularly researched the specific issue, but off the top of my head, it would seem potentially problematic if you said, you know, if you own a restaurant in town or you own a business or you reside in town, you can get a food truck, but, you know, somebody who live, who has a, you know, comes out of Rochelle Park...
The bottom, the bottom line here was to, to allow food trucks in certain, in certain areas.
And they should apply for a permit to work in, within Hackensack for that time that they want to come to Hackensack then.
Well, again, if you want to discuss this with us, give us a call. Your, your three minutes is up, but you can't, we can't discriminate against who can own a food truck, you can't, and come into town. It's, it's just not legal. Because then you get sued and, you know, that, that simple lawsuit could turn into fines or fines to the city of huge amounts for, for discriminating against somebody or fines to the city of huge amounts for discriminating against somebody just because they don't live here or have a business here. So, you know, I don't think that would fly. I, you know, I understand your idea. It would solve, it would solve a lot of problems.
The people that's in Hackensack.
Well, a lot of.
The business people that's here in Hackensack.
Well, you know what really fixes the problem?
It goes against what we're doing.
I understand. I understand. Well, not 100%, because the food truck events that we had were to promote downtown Hackensack and to bring people into Hackensack.
Right.
And have those people not just see the food trucks, but see what else is starting to happen in Hackensack. It's part of the growth of the city. It's not just about going to have an empanada, the empanada guy. It's about, you know, coming down and see what's happening in downtown Hackensack, a little entertainment here, you know, passing out flyers about the art center, stuff like that. We're trying to make people more aware of the city. But our time is up, sir, so, you know, we'll have to end it here, but.
Just put it on the book. Consider what I said.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
If you want to attend this meeting, give your information to the clerk and I'll get a hold of the meeting.
All right. Thank you, guys.
We got your number, miss. Mrs. De Pasquale. I'll put her on the committee. All right. Anyone else from the public want to speak? Real quick, before I go to the rest of the councils, I want to address Mr. Servos. Rich, nobody wants to pay the kind of money we're having to pay out and borrow to do these sewers. I, believe me, sewers are the worst things to spend money on. You know why? Because nobody sees, money down the drain. Nobody sees it. It's underground, you know, unless it's acting up, it doesn't bother anybody. And that's, to be quite honest, why the problem across the nation in older cities have infrastructure issues, right? And what happens is it goes on for a long, long time, and all of a sudden, you're left with aging infrastructure and sewers that just cost a ridiculous amount of money to repair and replace. And that's kind of where we are. Last thing I want to do is bond $15 million to fix a couple of blocks of sewers. It's the worst thing in the world, believe me. But that said, you're right. Not my money, it's not Kathy's, and any council member's money. It's taxpayer, well, some of it is because we pay taxes too. But it's the taxpayer money. I agree with that. And, but we're trusted to do the right thing with that. And believe me, fixing the sewers with the shape they're in, and I've seen them, is very important to the city, especially separating them. So with that, motion, motion to close?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Mrs. Von Ruden-Dort.
Good evening. Congratulations to all the newly promoted firefighters. Well deserved. And congratulations to our track team. You know, the athletes put in a lot of time and dedication in their sports, but I think the parents and coaches should be recognized too. They dedicate a lot of time with the athletes, getting their kids to practice, making sure everything is set in place. So thanks to the parents and coaches for always being there for our young athletes in Hackensack. Saturday is the open house for M&M, I believe at 10:00 AM. So if you're around and want to come down and see the new M&M building, please do. Today, we had our ribbon cutting for Johnson Park, the turf field. It's beautiful. There was a good turnout, a lot of soccer players. They were excited to get out there. It was a nice event. Baseball of Hackensack will be hosting a beef steak in Tricky Trail November 15th. It's a while away, but it's the first event that Baseball of Hackensack has been hosting in a while, so I'll get you more details on that. School's back in session, so please be aware. I know the police department and our city manager has really worked diligently on making sure that the drop-offs and pickups were smooth. And I've heard great things at the different schools saying that it's much smoother this year with drop-off and pickup and no main issues. So thanks to the police department and Ted for putting that together. Tomorrow's 9/11, we're going to have a memorial in front of the Hackensack Fire Department. There's another one immediately after the county's hosting one, but let's just take time to remember. I think it's amazing to think that my children and some of the young children don't even know what 9/11 is. They weren't born, they don't know the significance of it. So it's important to instill in them that, you know, it was a day where, you know, not just something bad happened, but it was a day that the whole country, the whole city came together for once and, you know, put all our differences aside, all of our political views were put aside, and we were one unit coming together. So that's the lesson I try to, you know, teach young kids today, that it was a day that we were all Americans and banded together for once and put our differences aside. So thank you and have a good night.
Thanks, Steph. Also like to comment, it was so nice to see the young folks from the track team here. And, you know, walking with their medals, jingling, you could see how proud they all were. And it was so nice, we had a great turnout. We not only had their families, but we had the fire department families, and there was a lot of people here to support them. And I think it's so important that we do, you know, acknowledge these accomplishments of our young children, and great to see these programs and the coaches that, you know, volunteer their time and put a lot of time and effort into it. And our fire department, I mean, we're so blessed. We have the top fire department in the state, and we're so proud of them, and we're so fortunate to have them. And, you know, the many fine men that work here hard and sacrifice time with their family and friends to be here and support our city, and to see them move through the ranks and be rewarded for that was also a really nice thing. I'd also like to take a moment to talk a little bit about the sewer work. John, you stole my thunder that sewers aren't attractive, that, you know, no one, no one really wants to see us spending a lot of money on sewers. It's not a popular thing to be bonding for. Just like it wasn't a popular thing for us to be bonding $30 million in tax appeals. These are things that, you know, you can look through history and you can look at other towns and other councils, and things like paying for tax appeals, things like paying for sewers, these are things that folks like to put off, politicians like to put off. They, oh, you know, that's not a popular thing, so let's not worry about that. Let's pay for other things that are going to, folks are going to see and they're going to reward us for. But it's something that has to be done, and that's what this council is doing. When we came, when we were elected and we started our first term, I mean, we came in, we handled the $30 million tax appeal, and we've already completed one phase of the Main Street sewer separation. Some of you may not realize that. But one phase, Upper North, is already done. So we dug right in and jumped into that problem as well. And to solve this entire problem, the city's with its combined sewer, I mean, we're talking about astronomical money. So there's no way you can do this all at once. There's no way you can even probably do this in 10 years. It's probably a 20-year project. But you have to start. And what we've done and put together is a plan that puts into effect, here's what we're going to do this year, here's what we're going to do next year, and we're going to start chipping away at this sewer problem without affecting our taxpayers. And yes, right now, we're increasing our debt, but our CFO, and he's a wonderful CFO, so what he does is he looks at the management of that debt. So we're never adding more debt that's going to affect or hit our bottom line. And that's what debt management is all about. We have to start working on these sewer issues, right? The state, the DEP, is in here, and we have to, we pay money every year. We have to apply for permits because we have CSO overflows, right? The DEP, the state, says you should not have more than four overflows a year into that river. Okay? Now, we're not talking about overflow of storm, we're talking about sanitary going into this river of Hackensack. How many do you think we have a year now? We have 70. 70. So we've got to get from 70 to four. That's the imposition that we have from the state. Plus, the quality of life issues. I mean, maybe it's not affecting you particularly, but we have residents that are negatively impacted, that could have sewer backup into their homes. We have flooding issues. These are quality of life issues. Yeah, they're not pretty, like the mayor said. These aren't pretty, these aren't fun things to be spending money on. But it's our responsibility as city leaders to make sure that these things are getting done. Just like paving wasn't done for years and years, work investment in our park and our recreation, none of these things, all of this had been neglected in this town for years and years. That's not who we are. We're getting these things done, and they need to get done. And we're doing it in the most cost-effective manner that we possibly can. And in the long term, the sewer overflow issues, we'll start, we'll start to see a return and a savings on that. Number one, when, think about this, our storm water is combined with our sanitary. So B, this is all going to BCUA, who charges us to process this? So when we start eliminating storm water, that's less, that we're going to have to be paying to be processed, plus these overflow costs, et cetera, that the state imposes on us. So we have to look at solving this problem, quality of life, state enforcing it, and we have to start doing it now. We can't keep passing the buck because we've passed the buck on this for way too long in this city. And I'll get off my soapbox, but Regina, about your comment from the, from the committee of hold, yes? You could tell that I was upset, and you can tell that, I think I don't hide my feelings so well when I am upset. Main Street was supposed to be done. And I'm the type of woman who, when she says she's going to get something done, I'm going to do everything I can. I'll stand on my head to get that done. So it not being done is very, very disturbing to me. But that doesn't mean that I disagree with Jim's financing strategy or what he's presenting. I just wanted the Main Street sewer work to be done, to be prioritized, number one. And if I was going to vote for what we were proposing here, which is a sound financial decision, I wanted a commitment that this city is going to prioritize and get that Main Street work done now. Exactly also for the young woman that was here and spoke about her family business. I agree with her 100%. Getting down Main Street, if I'm driving, if I'm driving, I guess it's up, if I'm driving up Main Street, sometimes I want to scream. You know, not only the condition of the roads, but the folks that are just stopping and leaving their cars in the middle of the street, there's a million issues that we have to resolve. And we have to start focusing and finishing that work. That's what that comment was about, Regina.
You did not know. You didn't know.
Absolutely correct. I also did not know, I was not aware that that work had stopped. You're absolutely 100% correct. And that is disturbing to me as, it's disturbing to me as well, Regina. And I'm being totally transparent and honest in saying that publicly. We had a lot of things, Stephanie alluded to them, we have a lot of celebrations here in town, and it's wonderful. Today, we had the ribbon cutting at the soccer field. I think the fire department is having a solemn but a very noteworthy event. We hope folks come tomorrow at 3:30 in front of the fire department to acknowledge the monuments that they have, the tribute to 9/11. M&M, I'm sure Dave's going to talk about it, but this Saturday is going to be a great event. You can stop in and out all day from 10 to 3 at the M&M building, get to see what it's all about. They have activities planned. Please, tell the children you know in your neighborhoods, et cetera, come out and see what we have down there. The Wizards are going to be there, yes. It's going to be a great day. And Performing Arts Center, a local theater group is putting on In the Heights this Friday and Saturday. I tell you to go get a ticket, but three performances, all sold out. I mean, phenomenal. I mean, that's really a tribute to what's going on in the Performing Arts Center, the people that are managing it, and these wonderful theater groups. I'm going Friday night, so I'm glad I got my tickets. Hope to see some of you there. Thanks for coming and have a great night.
Thank you. Dave?
I'm glad the ordinance was pulled tonight pertaining to the food trucks. I personally plan on being at the meeting whenever we discuss the ordinance. I'm glad the turf was finally fixed and opening season for breakfast socket is Monday next week, I'm not sure. This Saturday, we've talked about it enough, we have a grand opening of the M&M building at 10:00 AM. Hopefully, we see everyone there. Congratulations to our fire officers that were promoted tonight. I salute you, and I'll see you all tomorrow at 3:30 at the ceremony. Schools are back open. Please remember the drop-off procedures and slow down. Have a great night. Thank you.
Dale?
Okay. Congratulations again to the kids, to the track team, and thank you for, to the coaches for the time they spend with the kids. Keep it away from drugs and everything else. It's a wonderful job. Congratulations again to the firemen, they got promoted. And we're going to thank you from the bottom of my heart for the job they do in the city to keep our families safe and the rest of our residents. And we replaced the turf in the soccer field, I think, being used for the 20 years, and was already presents some safety issue to the kids that they participate in the sports. And Saturday, we had the official opening of the M&M building, and I hope everybody show up from 10 to 3. And the paving program continued. We are paving few streets, like Rowby Hall, Lodi Street, Euclid, Clinton. And we are preparing the lift for the paving program for next year, and we're going to continue. Respect to the sewers, our sewers, they are like over 100-year-old. And different towns, they got problems because the sewers, they are like versed because they don't have the capacity to handle when the city start growing up. Lift though, one of them, they got problems all over. And that's one of the reasons we are working to try to improve our infrastructure to prevent problem to our residents. Thank you for coming. Have a safe trip back home.
Thank you. And I'll be a little repetitive, I want to congratulate the new fire officers, our track stars. It was really nice that we did the kids first, so the firemen got to, it's like they had a huge crowd to cheer them on as they got their certificates. That was nice for the kids, and they deserve it. If you haven't seen the M&M building, ladies and gentlemen, come down and see it on Saturday. It's a great building. The 9/11 dedication, I'm not just going to speak about the dedication, I'll speak a little bit about 9/11 itself. Like I said before, everybody remembers where they were, people that were old enough to remember. I was on a job up in Washington Township, New Jersey, when I was, just happened to put the television on while we were working inside this house. And, you know, I suddenly see a plane flying into a building. I was like, what the heck was that? You know, of course, from there, we were glued. And I had friends that worked in the city, of course, I was nervous for them and praying for them, and, you know, you knew our firefighters and our police and our EMT were going to be on the job rushing to that scene. You know, I've done a lot of thinking about 9/11 and our lack of vigilance and, you know, the way we have been, you know, kind of laid back, and I think that's why we got hit so bad. We were not ready for that and weren't prepared. And we tightened up, as Stephanie said, right after that, we came together as a nation, we tightened up, a lot of rules changed, laws changed, air traffic changed, you know, locked cockpits and special doors, and made it much harder to just even go anywhere by air travel.